This is your opportunity to shine.
Line?
Well, you won't start it now. And it's called meaning to order. Mr. Strange? Would you like to say the prayer?
Good morning, Father. We thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. We just thank you, Lord, for all you do for us, and we ask you to keep your hand up over us and our city and our boys, Lord. In the name of these things, in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any other comments?
July 11th, 2016, Board of Alderman met in regular session with Mayor Eric Huneal presiding. Alderman President Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Doc Krickser, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Strickler called the meeting to order. The invocation was given by Clay Talton, Life of Christ Church pastor. The pledge of allegiance was led by Mayor Huneal. Minutes of the June 13th meeting were read and approved. Collectors and treasurers reports were given. Under citizen comments, John Bodie addressed the board and gave more detailed information regarding the efforts of the Knox County Community Development Corporation to assist when the country club disbanded. Monica Zahn addressed the board regarding the issue of adding a traffic control sign at the intersection of East Broadway and South Shoemate. She said she sees more traffic in that area and many appear to be speeding. Mark Bros of Klingner and Associates met with the board and updated the board on the sewer project as it nears completion. He also presented pay requests and change orders for the contractors, and the following action was taken. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Rick Winter to approve the Kioka Contractors Pay Request Number Seven in the amount of $1,719. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Huneal questioned Mr. Bros regarding the I and I inflow and infiltration at the sewer plant and his concern that it still seems to be high during a month with little rainfall. Mark responded to Mayor Huneal's concern and then continued with his report. Motion was made by Ryan Mason and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve the Kioka Contractors Change Order Number Five, which results in a deduct of $3,380. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Doc Krickser to approve the Utility Solutions Pay Request Number Six in the amount of $7,383.46. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Doc Krickser and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve the Utility Solution Change Order Number Three, which results in an increase of $7,515.3. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ryan Mason to authorize the certificate of substantial completion to be issued to Utility Solutions. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ron Stansberry to approve the Utility Solutions Pay Request Number Seven in the amount of $38,639.58. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Doc Krickser to approve the Willis Brothers Incorporated Final Pay Request Number Nine in the amount of $19,156. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve the Municipal Pipe Tool Pay Request Number Three in the amount of $529,666.34. Motion carried unanimously. Mark stated that the estimate of funds to be requested from USDA Rural Development is $606,421.18, which includes the Klingner invoice in the amount of $1,695 and the refund to the city for the Durkin Equipment Invoice for $2,832 and the Van De Venter Engineering Invoice for $5,329.80. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve the estimate of funds recommended by Mark Bros. Motion carried unanimously. There was a brief recess, and then motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Delmar Strange to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Jeff Dos addressed the board and presented additional information regarding a proposed sports complex on the City Lake property. He had a listing of individuals interested in supporting this type of project. He also had a map of the City Lake property with the proposed location of ball fields. There was some discussion regarding the type of ball fields and their location on the property. A consensus was reached to plan for one regulation baseball field and one regulation softball field. Jeff said he would need a commitment from the city to lease the property before he could meet with the Knox County Commissioners. He said park board members will need to be elected, and they will need to request a sales tax or property tax issue be placed on the ballot. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Rick Winter to agree to lease the City Lake property to a park board with members elected by the voters of Knox County to make improvements at the City Lake property that will include but not be limited to camping, walking trail, and two ball fields. Motion carried unanimously. The lease agreement will be prepared by the city attorney when a park board is in place. The board reviewed a liquor license application submitted by Lisa Schroth at 505 West Gardner-Herdland. Lisa plans to open a bar and grill at the former location of the VFW at 501 South Fourth Street. She plans to keep her job at Kirksville and will have family and friends to help run the business. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Rick Winter to approve a liquor license for Lisa Schroth. Motion carried. Eyes were Rick Winter, Rene Edwards, Delmar Strange, and Ron Stansberry. Nays, Doc Krickser, abstention, Ryan Mason. Department reports Ty Parish, utility supervisor, Mike Wright, wastewater superintendent, and Officer Keisha Goodwin gave reports for their departments. The Board of Alderman authorized Ty Parish to make a purchase of a tapping tool to connect six homes, which, where's Ty? I think you said that's not correct. It's not six homes, so I'll correct that. Did you say it's 13, actually? Okay, to connect 13 homes to a new water line on North Campbell Street. Under unfinished business, a traffic sign at the intersection of Broadway and Shoemate was discussed. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Rene Edwards to put a yield sign at Shoemate Street to stop the south traffic. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Doc Krickser and seconded by Rene Edwards to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 10:40 PM. Any other additions, corrections?
You ready? Collections for July 2016. Water account, $25,190.39. Sewer total, $24,009.90. Sanitation total, $13,908.55. General fund total, $8,625.80. Recreation total, $354.60. Street total, $1,860.20. Special lights total, $71.38. Meter deposit total, $240. Reserve and improvement fund total, $2,697.4, with a grand total collected, $76,957.86. Okay, the only other thing I have is we did have a couple that we shut off this month, and I've written on there. One of them was covered with deposit. The other ones still have an amount that we'll try to get from there. When you guys are done looking at that, if you pass it to Margaret, so that it doesn't leave here.
If anybody else has any questions? No questions?
Thanks.
Hello. Everything's pretty routine, so I don't have anything to go over with you unless you have questions.
I don't see anything jumping out.
I didn't either.
Keep our fingers firm.
Okay, I'll let you move on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Monthly bills?
It's pretty routine.
Everybody thinks they're all routine? Or is passing? No? Do we have a motion to do pay bills? Ron? Two seconds. All in favor? Alrighty, now we pay the bills. Citizens' comments. Any comments from the citizen? Well, citizens' comments, we'll move on. Mr. Bros, how are you?
Fine. How are you guys doing? Good for a Monday. I believe that Margaret may have passed out. I've got a report that will just kind of go over a little bit. Where we're at on each contract. And I think we've got one, one action ahead of us. Willis Brothers, we've just got a little bit of cleanup work left to do on the Fulton Street. Their warranty period extends to March 2017, so we've got quite a few months left in that, about eight months or so. Just so you know, on all of these, about nine months in, USDA will come with us and do an inspection so that, and will identify any deficiencies, and then we'll, we'll get that to the contractors so they can take care of that over the last three months of the contract. So that's kind of how that process works. It's built into the whole project, so. And I'm sure there will be some, and there are already a couple on some of these contracts. Contract two, municipal pipe tool. They're done with the lining. They're doing grouting of the lateral connections. I believe they'll be done with those this month. Their contract time ended March 18th, and at the time of this meeting, they're 143 days past contract expiration date. And so you see what the penalty amount is there currently. I put further discussion on there. I don't know if there is further discussion on that. I think at this point, you'll want to get done, and then we reevaluate that situation and have that discussion of how we want to handle that.
What's their done date?
I think they'll be done this month, so, yeah. Grouting of laterals is something you really need to do when it's not raining, which we've had a fair number of days to do that when it's not, so. But there's, when you've got, gosh, 400, 400 and some connections, you know, it's a lot.
So is this the?
This is where they go in through the pipe where your lateral goes into the sewer pipe. They go in and they inject a grout that expands in the presence of, of, of water, and then it hardens, and so it seals off that connection.
Oh, it's got a machine that does that?
Yeah, they have a machine that comes from the inside of the pipe. That's how that process works. Contract three, utility solutions. Their warranty lasts until July next year. I think we've got a couple manholes that have a couple of leaks up by the church, and we've already notified them of that, so they're aware of it. And when a couple other things show up, we'll just have to go ahead and come back, so. They did come back and address some of the wobbly lids there. Mayor and I went with a few things this afternoon, and there's a couple manholes that we've got what I would term more than excessive cracking around them that I think they just need to chop up and re-pour. Yeah, there's a couple of those, so. For whatever reason, I don't know if there's some settlement around it or what. Contract four, Kioka Contractors. The base project works completed. We've kind of left that one open because there's some other things that we're trying to get some pricing on that we want to maybe use the remaining money, funding for. Last month, we talked about looking at generator and dealing with the issue that Ameren was left us with down there with that hole. And we're still trying to get some information out of Pat McCarty at Ameren, and so I'm hopeful that we'll get that soon if we can size that generator and get some pricing. I hope to have that stuff at the next month. We're wanting to try to make sure that we have a, a generator that can run both the water pump station down there and the plant. And we may look at natural gas and diesel and just look at the, compare the pricing and see what you guys want to do, so.
We have the capability for the natural gas. It's going to be a little bit more money initially, but.
What's the KW's on that?
I haven't been able to size it yet because he's getting the information from Ameren. They fit a little bit of a challenge with that water.
They don't want us putting it in, or?
Well, I think they suggested that we do it, but whatever, guys, we'll get to the reason. The guy's been a little bit elusive because I started the conversation the day after the meeting last month. I don't know a whole lot more today than what I did then with how they want us to do it. They sent us their installation, and I'm like, thanks, guys, but I need what I also asked for, so. And I'll get it from them. Couple of little miscellaneous things, I think that really kind of bunch list items with. The SCADA, just a couple of pieces with that, and then. Lift stations, we've got a couple little outstanding issues out there on that. One, one other thing that we'll want to probably look at with some of the remaining funding is trying to get some pump repairs that we've got to do at a couple of the lift stations and down at the plant that we've been having a few issues with seal failures or things like that. And I think there's two pumps down at the plant that, that are not pumping what they're supposed to. And so it's probably time to change out some impellers and things like that, so. Those should be fundable through the project, and we'll, we'll try to get, you know, we're not going to be able to get an exact number on that because generally you have to pull it and send it in, and then they'll give you a quote to fix it. But based on what we've seen in the past, between all those, it's probably going to be $30,000, $35,000. So, but.
My granddad's, after the last meeting, he got curious. Pump one was running, what was it, Mike, eight hours?
Yeah, there, there's, there's two pumps down there that aren't pumping the same capacity as the new pump that we just put in about three years ago, so. I got to messing with them to see.
They're nine years old. Those types of pumps, if you get the past six, seven years, generally you start to see a decline in efficiency and pumping capabilities.
Because you saw between one and two, it was like eight hour difference in the same pumping capacity?
Yeah, and the same amount of flow coming in for the day, it would run about eight hours longer than the other pump and pump the same amount of water, but run eight hours longer, so. Obviously, we've got an impeller or motor slowing or something of an issue that could also return, give us false readings on our inflow because our levels stay up a little higher than they should be, so. So we need to address those to make sure we know what we're getting out of our sewer project, too.
Also, number, pump three is tripping out on you, you said?
Yeah, when it goes into backup mode, I get, about every 30 minutes, I get a pump fail alarm, and then it clears itself about five minutes later, and then it will run about 30 minutes to 45 minutes and trip out again. So it's got a, it's heating up or, or something.
It's got too much average or something?
Something, and it's, it's overheating, and then it kicks itself off so it doesn't tear itself up, and then once it cools down and it figures out it's okay, it's still calling for it, it comes back on.
So these are things that if we didn't have funding remaining, you'd be probably doing out of your own pocket at some point fairly soon, so.
And the, the one thing is the SCADA system has made all of those easier to detect there's a problem with those pumps. Before, we didn't know the pressures they were pumping at or the gallons per minute that they were pumping at, but with that SCADA system, it allows for us to monitor and foresee a problem with our pumps before it gets to a very bad stage.
You've got more values to use to determine that?
Yes, I've got a lot more data in there that I can determine.
All three of those pumps, the same size, running at the same rate?
Yeah.
Four eighty pumps. So the whole horsepower, the, 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 the pumps.
We've got about a quarter million dollars remaining on the ground, so. I expect we'll probably use some of that with the remaining municipal pipe tool work, but not anywhere near all of it, so. That's, I just want to bring out your attention, and, you know, as they need to fix these, you know, I'm sure they'll bring a bill to you, and we'll just take a copy of that bill and get it reimbursed with the project, so. Whatever process they bring those to you guys is, you know, I just wanted you to know they're going to have to do that work, so. And we have a mechanism to get it paid for, so. Any problems with that or concerns with that?
Want to go up for a change?
I have a question, Mark, on number two A. You're talking about the school and the Reed Street Lift Station.
Yeah, I was getting down to that in just a minute.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
What we've got on that one, this, we've got an issue with some pumps down there that those two lift stations, the water will come up and go over the top of the valve pit. As you know, down there at Reed Street, water will come up quite often. Same thing happens at the school occasionally. Those sump pumps are plugged into a receptacle in the valve pit. And so when water goes in there, it shorts the valve. So what, what the, the proposal to do, to do the, with this is, it's, it's $1,062 total, and that's for both of them, is to hardwire that sump pump to a receptacle that's in the control panel, GFI receptacle that's in the control panel, that's up above the flow level. And so that receptacle doesn't get wet anymore. Right now, they're, they've actually got an extension cord strung out across there, which is not really a safe thing to have, but that's what they have to make it work right now, so. Our recommendation is that we go ahead and have to hardwire that to get it, get it up, to get it done electrically correct.
As long as I remember that light goes off all the time.
Yeah. So that's what the change order number six is with Kioka Contractors, is a $1,062 to do both of those. So we would be asking on that to see if we're pushing. Agree or reject or what?
Let's definitely fix that. Ron, Renee? All in favor?
And that's for the change order number six.
$1,062.
And this is the only two we have that problem at?
Yeah.
All in favor?
One of the things we approved at the last meeting, I just need to have a mayor sign on it, and I need to have certificates of substantial completion for Willis Brothers. That's in the package out there. That doesn't require any matching. And then the last thing, we did get some flow data from Mike. I had to go back to the beginning of 2015. And I got everything through July this year, and we've started looking at some of that. Couple of things, and I'll, I'll have more detail. And of course, we just now, we're not quite done with the project, too, so I want to keep looking at this over a period of time. One of the things you, you need to do when you do one of these projects is reassess when you're done. What I've seen is that, you know, for example, a two-inch rain, you know, most recently, you had a two or three inch rain, what, about a week, week and a half ago? And his whole event where his flow came up and then went back down lasted about eight hours. Whereas before we did the project, it would have been probably close to three days. And so the overall volume that's getting in there and that is being pumped through the system is less. Now, some of those peaks, I, I still see some variations in the peaks, and some of that has to do with, I think, how intense the rainfall hits, and, you know, and I still think there's some surface connections in, in the, in the system. You know, I, I think we know of one, a fairly large one, that we require working out and, and issue with another entity. And then, you know, I still think there's probably some, probably some, some pump issues and things like that, but. The peaks aren't as high, the durations are much shorter. That's what we've seen so far. We've got a couple of other factors at play that make it hard to compare. We've changed the flow meter out in January this year, and so we don't know if the previous flow meter was reading fast, slow. We don't know when it was last calibrated, so it's kind of apples and oranges. And then I think he just had his flow meters all calibrated down there.
Thursday.
Thursday, so he's already noticed a little bit of a difference in the drop in what the flow is reading, so, so.
Pumps and wells we were discussing earlier would also slow down the production power through.
Right.
Or people might actually get down more with the prime's flow factor.
Right.
Be able to handle it faster.
Correct. If they were pumping what they were supposed to be pumping. So I, I feel like we've made some good progress. I, I think it's just going to take some more time to see exactly where that is. The durations are obviously much shorter, though, which is good news. He can get back to a normal operation then much quicker, which helps his, his numbers. Helps you stay in compliance, so. And then, any other questions on that project? And I just have one other item. Purcell Street, we're having the bid opening August 25th at 2:00 PM here at City Hall. So that project is out for bids. We've got a little arrangements that's been put out.
How do you figure it with that?
I have no idea. There's several of them looking at it, though, so. Fair amount of interest. Yeah, I expect we'll probably have five or six of them. So that's good. So at the next meeting, we'll likely have a pay request for municipal pipe tool. Hopefully have our numbers that we can talk about the generator, those items, and then we'll have some bid stuff to address on the Purcell Street project.
So I'm assuming, so we just have one contract?
Yes, try one.
Yeah, all these.
Just one. It's a small enough project, and it's, it's one type of project, so. Yeah, I understand. Hey, believe me, one contract is much easier to handle than four.
Right. I was hoping one.
But, but the reason we break them up like we do is because there, there are some contractors that are very efficient at certain parts of the work, and you need to get the benefit of, of that efficiency. It means lower costs for you.
And some aren't quite as efficient.
That's right. That's right. Guys at Lake Pike usually aren't very good at working on sewer plants, vice versa. That's all I have. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
What, what do we figure that out, do we figure that out about?
1:30, 1:40, I think there's more on that.
Yes.
Okay. I'll grab the paperwork.
Mark was talking about that sewer plant being up. We had a water leak that we'd kind of been assuming was a water leak for about the last month, and we did find it and fix it, so that'll also help with that flow down there. I know it's hard to check over the weekend, but the booster station this morning has dropped about half of what we were pumping. We were running 120,000 plus gallons a day, and we're versus over the weekend, like I said. I'll know more by tomorrow, but it's back down the 60s now, so we, we've dropped about half by tracking that water leak down, which the water leak's running around the sewer, so Mike was getting all that. So that's a big part of that, too, just to add in on that. Still on the water ticket. Jason didn't pass his test, so we finally got his results back from, he took the test, it says the 29th, so it's right in the middle of June. We finally got the results back on that, so.
What was that for?
This is a distribution license.
Water license, so now it's, it's very, you know, decent, now, increase. Ordinarily, yeah, that's why we wait until there's a meeting, so we can tell you, and then usually you vote to go ahead.
Further on, um, we got our five-year letter from, uh, our lake inspector, I don't remember what the name of the company is now, this year's our fifth year again to come inspect the dam. So we've got the lake dam cleaned up. Eric helped us mow a part of it, we mowed part of it with the David Brown, and then Steve went out and finished it with his tractor. From Ossis, he can barely get up on that, but we got it cleaned up, so it should be ready for inspection this fall.
So probably ready yet to notify them, so we're ready to say?
Can, yep.
I think that Daring Lake has that same inspection.
Yeah, I think so.
Just do a area then.
It's every five years. But it is cleaned up, ready for, ready to roll.
You'd have them for another five years.
Yeah, yeah. Ditching's progressing, uh, of course, we had a couple of big rains that shut us down a little bit, but we've still got plenty to do. I think we're starting to get a pretty good jump on some of that. So we'll keep trying to run on that as we can.
Knows that one down below the cell line, it cleaned itself out pretty good.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, it helped to get some of them out just in time, and then actually then, some of the big rains actually helped to get them cleaned out. We jetted a bunch of tubes and got, like I said, several, I know there's several more to do, I've got a list started. Like I said, we'll just keep chipping away at that. I've got coal patch down there, we got a hundred ton of coal patch to get us started. I think the oil distributor is as close as we're gonna get till we get oil. I mean, we, we've got some decent fuel and stuff to run through and come out, so I think now it's just gonna be, get some oil and give her a shot. And I think we'll be ready to roll, so hopefully here in the next few weeks, or by next meeting, we'll do a report on some streets, I'm hoping.
What are you planning on using for your older line, your chat?
Well, normally, we'd used like a half-inch type chip. What we looked at, it's got a lot of lime in it this time. We're either gonna go, probably what we're gonna go with from what we looked out there, they got a three H chips, and it, it's basically a clean rock. So they have a little lime in it. And talked to one of the operators out there, and that's what he kind of recommended. So that's probably what we're looking at right now, is three H chips. We're gonna give it a whirl and see. I haven't stocked a lot of buns, but I'd like to try it first and see. I know when they did the sewer project, why they, the reason they went with the river rock, uh, they wanted a bigger rock. I think they tried the half-inch chips to start with, um, it was too much lime, it was balling up all the oil. So that's why they went and got river rock, but of course, it's quite a bit more expensive to do. So I think we're gonna try the three H chips and see how it works. Um, the water line progress, um, we did pass our water samples finally. So we got that flushed out, it's ready to roll, located out, so hopefully we'll get, jump on some of that here in the near future too. Have to periodically flush it, so people call and tell their water running out of the pipe over by Eric's house, which there's several that did. It's, it's natural, it's normal.
Get that minus.
I'd be glad to, yeah, be glad to get it minus.
Ty, are you all gonna be rush hogging weed anymore for the Corn Fest?
We'll probably try and run the sycamores around again. And there's some spots, I know Marion Street's got a spot on our needs, there's, there's a few. Of course, the grass is growing again now for rains, so. Yeah, I figured right before Corn Fest, we'll probably try and run around sycamore again. Other than that, I'm trying to catch up on the mowing. That's all I've got though.
Was we gonna check on it, getting the water tower cleaned again, is that product or not?
Margaret and I talked about it a little bit. Yeah, that'd be a big deal.
Didn't we have them coked out with copper, did we not?
No, it's just been cleaned. See, what's, what he's talking about, it's actually probably due for a painting. I don't think it's, I don't think it's ever been painted. Mark says it's never been painted, so, and it went in and.
Been twenty years. That's pretty good life.
Ron, you're, when we had it washed, they sprayed it with a housing deterrent. Right, they're supposed to keep it from, because we were having it where it would come bad like every other year. And it did like, it did help it, but that, that's what we had to spray it with.
It eventually worked out.
That's what we had to spray it with, with something to deter the algae.
Yeah, they'll have to worship first. Putting out for bids.
I didn't, I, uh, ran out of time for my report. Um, I told, I talked to Eric, and I'm gonna finish it up tomorrow, and if you guys would like a copy, I'll leave a copy here for Margaret. You can stop by and pick it up. But the only thing I really have is, you probably saw in your bills, this bill for Massport for the sludge truck. Remember, we had our sludge pump on the truck rebuilt, probably less than a year ago. Well, we found out what caused the pump to go bad. There's a, a pot on there, it's on the top of the tank, it's in the front, and they call that a primary tank. And it's got a little bowl in there that sits in a cage, and when that thing starts to fill up, that ball closes that valve off, so nothing ever goes down in that pump. I had no idea it was there, or had any idea that it should have been inspected, I just, I didn't know.
It's inside the tank?
It's inside the tank. So that actually rusted off and fell into the tank. So what had happened, we've been using it just stirring the tanks, and it's been fine, because we've never pulled anything onto the truck. Well, I hauled one load of sludge and the, crap the pump out, basically. It sucked fluid and sludge and stuff in through that hose and down into the pump, and it's a dry cavity pump. It's just made to create a vacuum or force pressure to force it out. So I got ahold of Massport, which is the company that actually builds the pump, and, uh, they're gonna send us a new pump, because we actually cracked the housing on the pump this time, which, I have a tendency to believe that that might have already been stressed from the first time we had trouble, because it, anyway, it's liquid cooled and everything, so we had a big ordeal. We've got the pump coming, um, they're gonna send us a new primary. We have to cut the old one out of the top of the tank and have it re-welded in the top of the tank. And then hook all of that back up, but this truck was designed to have a pre-filter in front of it, which would stop any of this from happening. Ours doesn't have it on it, I don't know if it was because of room or, or what, but we've bought a filter, a pre-filter, to go into the vacuum lines of this truck to hopefully stop that from ever happening.
Ball valve thing shoots grabs again, this filter will.
It's, it'll catch it to where, as long as you're not leaving it for thirty minutes at a time, you'll be able to shut it down before you have any pump trouble. So it's, you know, yeah, it's, it's, none of that stuff's. Cheap, it's, yeah, and like I said, I didn't even know that that was there. I thought that the, there's a pot on the side of the truck, and he said that that's actually called a secondary shut-off. And, um, it failed also, but it, um, it was because the force of water going in there, the, the primary's a six-inch ball, and the secondary's a two-inch ball, and he said, well, most generally, he said, you got about ten seconds for that secondary to hold before it just, the pressure just gets so great, and it'll give. He said, there, there's no way around it.
Is it in good shape?
It's, and I took it all out and cleaned it all up, and sent him pictures of it, and he said, it's, it's fine, the secondary's fine. So, um, with that knowing, and he sent, he's gonna send me a, he gonna email me a checklist of how to maintenance that primary, how to take it apart in the wintertime, so we can keep it.
Keep some life in it?
Yeah, keep it from, the actual primary itself is very.
Is the welding on here, or is that actually?
No, that, that'll be something different, we'll have to have it done when, when the truck gets, when the parts get here. A vacuum. It'll either suck that thing down in the tank, or it'll blow it up out, depends on whatever you're doing with it. But anyway, the, uh, we're supposed to have the parts tomorrow or Wednesday, and we'll get to putting everything back together. I'm gonna have to wait and see once I get it here, and I'll contact, Eric had given me a number of a gentleman in Memphis, and, um, either Hoover or some, whoever can get it in the fastest, basically, because we're, as you know, we're. Who's that? Oh, yep. But we'll, uh, you know, I need to be fixing on getting that all sewed up and done by the end of September, so. That's kind of my big push, is to get it back and going and sludge hauled and get out of there. And like I said, you know, no, not, I, I, I don't push no blame, no way. But when, when Brad left, I'd never run the sludge truck, and basically it was, we, this is how everything works, and, and we weren't hauling sludge at the time, and I didn't know any questions to ask him about the truck, and, well, I, I just didn't have any idea, and so. I got a very good education from this guy at Massport, I picked his brain over and took some notes, and he's gonna send me some pre-maintenance deals that we can do after we get done hauling that way at all.
And we oughta write that all down and make a binder for that truck and keep it in it.
That's a good idea.
Have that for reference.
Yeah, in case somebody else needs to use it for something, at least they can take it apart and know what to check.
Right.
Yeah, because it.
Hold something up just for not knowing.
Yeah, because he said, you know, he goes, when something like that happens, he said, you got, without a filter in there, he said, you got, you know, thirty seconds at the most, if you don't turn it off like right now, he said, you got thirty seconds, and it's junk. He said, you're either rebuilding the inside, and he said, you had worst-case scenario, it cracked the housing, and we can't even just rebuild the pump, you've gotta put a new one in. So, anyway, that's all I have for you.
All your numbers look good otherwise?
Yep. Alright, thank you.
You get three strikes. Put the new truck on the road July the eighteenth. Finally got it all serviced and ready to go, everything on it, so, um, no issues with it, I can see, so everything worked pretty good. There it is, pretty well business as usual. Cleaned up, I'd say we're about ninety-five percent there on most of it. I'm not counting the building up too.
I'd say, well, have you looked at some yards lately?
I have, I have, I've talked to several people about their yards. Another one of them, I think, on your list, you gave me, actually loading up tonight, so.
Well, thank goodness. You know, the neighbor I mentioned, we signed him, talking to him.
Yeah, no, they're loading up tonight. He, uh, doesn't have a license, so he has to wait till he has a driver, so. So he loaded up today, so he can maybe drive it out in the next couple of weeks.
Nobody's around, right.
So, uh, but, but, uh, yeah, of course, like, like they said, the grass is growing faster again now, so. So we're gonna have that, and I, I noticed another one was mowing, it says, I came up here tonight, so. So they're, they're getting there, they're getting there, it's tough to keep some of the yards.
What about the building though? Um, is it, are they gonna go get much done to it before the Corn Fest?
Well, they were up there today for about thirty minutes, and then they left again, so. So I went back to check, and they were gone.
They haven't, you said? Well, it just needs cleaned up somewhat, get like a Corn Fest, I mean, I know it can't be down, but it can be somewhere better.
As far as the sidewalk goes, I just assume they leave the bricks on it, because the sidewalk's not fit to walk on. I think you'll have people walking on it if you, if it is cleaned off.
It's busted up, probably will drop.
Well, it was busted up before, it was busted up because the building was falling in. I mean, I didn't think it was stressed like it is in, but.
When we were walking beside it, it's really bad now.
Yeah, it's, it's caving in pretty hard, so. So, yeah, that'll be something that'll have to be replaced later. Depending on what happens.
They just need to be, you know, toll is, this Corn Fest coming up, needs to be cleaned up somewhere better, I think.
The alleyway, I think, will become an issue pretty soon too, with all the business owners.
I think it's gonna be, yes.
The grass ordinance, I'd say we probably need to, uh, have Tom look at it a little closer. We've got so many pastures in town, what, what we're calling pastures and stuff, and we just need to define our ordinance a little better, I think, as far as that goes. As far as the, uh, from the sidewalk out to the road, and we got a lot of people that don't mow that, and, and technically, the way I read it, they don't have to. They should, to make their yard look better. But, uh, you know, we've been doing it with the sycamore, the boys been going by with the sycamore. Getting it, you know, like this time of year, you're gonna need to do that every three weeks, just to keep it down, looking nice.
What about the one on the corner down by the, that I turned, go to my house?
Uh, Jason was down there and got a lot of the ditch out, out by the highway, and then they were down there the other day, and I think it was a little muddy down in there. They, they saw them pull a tractor in there, and it was a little bit muddy down in there on that one side, so.
Over a year.
Yeah.
I think we've been very lenient this time.
Yes, we have, we have.
This time.
We have, I'll go back down there tomorrow again and, and pressure a little harder and tell them it has to be done. So.
That would be appreciated.
I know last time I talked to him, he says, I should have wrote it down, he said, we were just hauling stuff yesterday. And then they were back in the field, so.
And I'm surprised, because he keeps everything so spotless anyway.
They do, they do, and that's, that was their answer both times I've talked to him, like, the last three times I've talked to him. And she, we're not ever like this, give us, give us a chance here. And I said, okay, we have, so, so. So yeah, I'll lean on them a little harder tomorrow, so. But other than that, everything's going pretty good, we got, of course, with all that criminal stuff going on. What's that? Well, I, I assume it's gone away, I haven't seen any final report on it, but.
I knew here, I didn't know.
Tom visited with the lawyers on that side, and I did too. We've both got the same feeling that this is going away, I mean, they just wanted to hear our side. She's since moved out of town too, so. So actually lives east of Ock City now, I think, so. So, so, yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as I know, we should be fine on that, so. I mean, I think we're fine anyway. So we're in the right, but yeah, I don't think it's, we haven't ever received a final thing saying it was close, final left notice. Yeah, exactly. But Tom and I both had the same feel from, from the gal we talked to, that it was just a finalization, conversation was all it was, so. Other than that, things are going good. Any questions for me?
You said the truck was up and running and going good?
Yes, it is. Sitting out here.
We'll charge five bucks for a ride.
For you guys, yeah, ten for anybody else. Some of them get a little more expensive than that. For a while, for a while, it always is a toss.
Moving on to bill number six ninety-nine. The pro, proposed ordinance number six ninety-nine, RE, conflict of interest. We don't wanna have a back-up from some of these. We all have a package from some of these. This is something we have to do every two years, Margaret?
Right, yes.
And I have to read just this bold and bold piece. An ordinance of the city of Edina, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal offices. This has to be passed every two years, because why, who are our words?
Our budget's over a million dollars.
This is the exact same time you guys have passed two years ago, come of them?
Ah, we passed it two years ago, yes.
The baby reading is, you're not there as animated.
I don't have to read it, it's passed an ordinance.
Yeah, we passed an ordinance, you don't remember when we read it, that long one?
I can't have a stamp, but I don't have to read.
So, so now we need another, we need a motion and a second to read it again, like...
The name, only?
Only. I wish that office of end, everybody. Come on, Dan.
An ordinance of the city of Edina, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials. All right.
So we read it...
Twice.
Twice, and so now we need to...
To pass it right off.
Yeah.
I make a motion for a doc's. And then six ninety-nine.
Get in here, Doc.
No, ma'am.
Roll one, save.
And do a roll call, vote.
Roll call. We need a roll call. Ron.
Hi.
Doc.
Hi.
Delman.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Your name?
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Six hours.
Donations. The horses. Any show, does it keep its same number?
Bill number and the ordinance number are always the same.
It stays the same, we just update it every two years.
Yeah, well, it'll be a different number, but this is for now, this one is six ninety-nine. The old one was some other number.
Ah, so it doesn't stay the same?
No. Well, if you've got a minute in there, uh...
She can have that if she wants it. Is it? I didn't write on it. Any unfinished business? No, Mr. Ross is gonna currently continue looking into the fall of the, of the ditch up there. That was part of the reason we met at four o'clock, driving one. I think it, Mark, do you think it'll help some of the problem for the funeral home? It'll take at least a quarter...
Take probably a quarter to half of the flow away from that direction. Gotta help some.
Where's the gun at, Al?
Right down here.
We had a...
Yeah, we looked that over and decided we didn't have a way to get rid of it.
Mainly for the courthouse.
Yeah, for the courthouse and doing so, we're gonna try to enforce it, get rid of the drains into our sewer, and storm drains into our center sewer.
If we can get this pulled off, that'll help.
It'll kill two birds with one stone.
They want us to help share costs, too. They feel the heat all this time, now they want us to share.
You don't think it's a headache, run the cord out?
No, but I'm getting tired of it, real tired of it.
Well, I, I mean, it'll help substantially, I think, Mr. Ross thinks so.
Not, yeah, I understand that part, but how much of a headache is it gonna be from us, for us from now on?
Well, that's what he's gonna look into also, about kind of the flow, how much is gonna be...
We got a problem down here where, where it's gonna head to already.
The horse is out now down here.
So we're gonna add that much more to it? It might be probably another problem for ourselves, that's why.
That's why we gotta look at it.
That's why he's gonna look at it.
That's just a preliminary thought.
Okay.
If it will be a problem, then of course...
If there's a solution to it, we can go that route, right?
All right, any other unfinished business? New business. We have two applications, one at the five hundred block from South Cameron Street, Steve and Debbie Peters, one at five oh six East Morgan Street, Ralph S. Mellon. Building permits. Everybody has a permit application on the back.
I didn't know you had that, sorry. Uh, a little more...
I have my body, I know, this one, this one was totally, I didn't know.
It's gonna be facing the east side.
Facing the temporary, Margaret? Facing the timber?
I think this is... Yeah, I think it's...
Well, base house, Campbell except when we just set back.
No, it'll be facing Big Woods.
What door?
Yep.
Oh, by the end, the south.
True, has to be open out doors.
That's why I was confused, because I couldn't, I couldn't say the place for this. Could be a basement, helps.
Been completed twenty seventeen.
I didn't walk back from this place, they...
Can I see the water, sewer's lining in that area then?
Yes, I guess, I, I said, because I just knew one time, Frank, I wanted permission for his house, on his lot.
This other one, I see, is George's house. Isn't it?
What?
He George's house.
Right, or never put it in?
Yeah.
All right, over.
It looks like it's stirred off.
Any other questions, I'll see you at Debbie Peters' permit, her application.
Yeah, well, it's outside his yard.
Outside his yard.
Yeah, Greg Peters' house, and there's a pit in the yard, it's his own purpose, not a residential one, and then it pumps it up in Campbell and then runs up to the Broadway.
So, where's the list item gonna work for this house?
It says it's not a residential.
It's gonna be private on the...
Basically, you have a private list item deal. He's gonna pump it out his house, and he's talking to Anderson, he's gonna pump it up, and I think it's a four-inch gravity line in Campbell, and they had told him that they could hook around to it, because then it becomes, that's the way, um, I was calling Curtis, Paul Mallard was there now, house right across from me, they're looking there, too. So Steve was, there'd be three homeowners in the line, so something was wrong with it, and he'd have to set the cost for him, so...
And it's there, until it gets to the street.
There. It's a four-inch line that runs up the Broadway.
It's their private, private.
And Bill Baker's, his pumps, he's, he's got his on, he's got two-inch pressure on, his pumps are there, too, the main and Broadway Street.
But we don't have a main?
Nope, there's no main, it's on Campbell. The rest of them now, and the other ones, they only got a lagoon down there. The, Steve's house will pump, it'll have its own private pump, it'll pump into the line, right in, or he's like, fuck it. It has no bearing on us, it's all his. And the water main's out there, so I mean, there'd be, there'd be water there.
What about the southern, I like, over there?
East Morgan Street. Water and sewers are there, they'll just have to dig down and find it.
So that's by the doctor's office.
Clear by our house. Yeah.
It'll be straight and all that, because that'll all take, count that two-story house that I cleared off. Sewer mark right there. We'll just have to dig down and find it.
So, I mean, you're gonna upgrade it?
Upgrade what?
Oh.
Our house is awesome, can't be upgraded.
He don't wanna change it.
Heck, no. It's Tracy Mallett's dad, it's... This Rock Miller.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'm excited to get a new neighbor.
Motion for him?
I'm excited to get a new neighbor.
Doc, you made the motion. Second, Ryan seconds.
Ryan.
All in favor? Nameless. Steven Debbie Peters. All in verse. Delman Tyrells. All in favor of Steven and... Nameless. Good house, I think. Been a while since I've had a house.
Yes, it has.
Well, two of them's moving, it's like...
It was a new incoming resolution, like...
Yeah?
Uh, some of them, that just came up there. They were wanting to have a real league basketball, maybe September.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah, on Saturday, they are asking to have the street closed to north of courthouse, between courthouse and community center.
Ox County Health Department, in collaboration with an Ox County Community Center and an Ox County Kindness Club, will be hosting a three-on-three youth basketball tournament on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, on the concrete uptown by the community center. The event, entitled Hoots for Health, will last through the day. We expect many teams from within and outside the county, as we are advertising this through our local public health agencies across northeast Missouri. We are encouraging other ongoing, ongoing activities that day, such as vendors, musicians, and potentially a barbecue on the courthouse lawn. We would like to ask the city of Edina permission to close the road between the courthouse and the community center for this day, beginning at six AM that morning until the end of the event, Saturday evening. Or it was clear, committee member. I think that would be, one of us...
Ten, eleven, whatever.
Nineteen, eleven.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be.
So that's just two weeks out.
Correct.
If you're going on work, they're calling it for me, my birthday's two days after that.
After this?
Yeah.
You're gonna go party choose?
Well, no, I just think they should never, they're having a party, too.
Brendan would know this already.
Looks like you...
Oh, yeah, Brendan would know.
So, does anybody think that's a good idea, or...
Make a motion. Contingent upon proper insurance.
How second?
Contingent upon proper insurance, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
I don't know. We have a request to move now, when somebody just asked the street closed.
The other insurance would be the community center, I'd say.
Yeah, they have.
Our basketball, they'd be there, they're not happy on the concrete, it sounds like.
It's not viable. Just tell Roy to bring her own suitors?
Not just for a closed street, unless they were planning on, you know, they have to have some kind of regulation.
Okay, so what was the vote?
They're, they're, yes, to close it. Any other new business? Any older than comments? No comments?
What, those big bell to hell, they, who's getting those?
Those are Mr. Morrison's side, no.
So we rent that, have to remember.
But is he leaving there, or does he get them, or...
No, it's contingent that when he gets them off at a timely man. I've left them there all the way up to October, before they're gonna be at the same...
Wasn't scared, because of the farm shop bailed them.
Right, they're Mr. Morrison's, so...
Okay.
And, hey, they actually...
Yeah, they did.
Three or something like that.
Probably, probably. All righty. We have it on the dock to vote for six ten point oh two one, firing, firing this plan, promotion of particular employees by their employee, with personal information that the employee just discussed or reported. Any motion on that?
I make a motion for a closed session.
Thank you, all in favor?
Oh, roll call.
Rick? Bye.
Bye.
We're going into closed session, no cameras, no media.
And none of your viewers that are watching right now.
Hmm?
None of your viewers that are watching right now.
Oh, where that boy got that?
So if you're watching this meeting, they're going into closed session, I'm gonna shut it off for now.
They're there watching him.
For the night, I'm gonna shut it off for the night.